Okay. It being 7:05, I'll now open the public hearing by reading the public notice for it. Notice of planning board hearing relative to proposed zoning bylaw amendments pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5. The Belcher Town Planning Board will hold a public meeting to discuss a proposed amendment to the town's zoning map. The public hearing will be held remotely and in person as follows. Select board meeting room, Lawrence Memorial Hall, to Javish Street, Belcher Town, April 22, 2025, 7:05 PM. The subject matter of the proposed amendment is to amend Chapter 145, Article 2, Section 145-5 zoning map to change the zoning of a portion of the parcel identified as Map 255, Lot 121 on the town's successor maps, from Ag A, Primary Agriculture, to B2, General Business, as posted on the town's website and on file with the town clerk and Planning Department. So, just to fill in for anyone who doesn't know, Lot 121 is a roughly 50-acre parcel now owned by the town and zone Ag A. That parcel has no frontage but is off Turkey Hill Road behind Anytime Fitness. The town would like to convey approximately 10 and 1/2 acres of that larger parcel to the abutting EDIC parcel D. Parcel D is also approximately 50 acres and is zone B2. If I've understood correctly, the proposed zone change would just apply to that 10.5 acres? And could we request a presentation from our representative from the EDIC? Explain what...
Here or there?
Where are you? Use the microphone.
Use the microphone.
So that people can hear.
We had some people...
Oh, we have actually someone on the two, several.
Well, just for informational purposes, yes, I'm on the EDIC and we are in the process of redevelopment for parcel D, which has this amount of frontage on Route 21. Anytime Fitness is right there. Obviously, this section here, which is over adjacent to the high school, is all wet, so we can't use that and it's sloped down, as you can see here. It's an odd-shaped piece and so it was kind of difficult to try to get the most out of it, but then we realized that it was adjacent to the town's parcel here, like you said, is another 50-acre parcel. And we talked about the possibility of squaring off dimensions and giving this 10 acres to the EDIC to enhance the development and trying to put it... The development will be for smaller businesses like landscapers, truckers maybe, loggers, anyway, smaller businesses that don't fit in with our master plan on campus, on Carriage Grove. That was something that we found was a problem right off the bat with that development was how they laid it out and the types of businesses to go in there and trying not to have conflicts. And there was a number of people that approached that, you know, they just kind of said, "Well, we'd love to have you somewhere, but not here." So that's why I was trying to pull this together. And actually Doug helped me out with this and said, "Well, we're adjacent to that land there, so that would make sense. It's not going to be used for anything on the other side of the wetlands from this high school." So anyway, that's why I'm here, to basically get your blessing to go before town meeting and have this join our parcel and be able to make a more efficient development. That's about it. Any questions?
I was just about to say...
Right now, you've got 50 acres in parcel D, roughly. You're going to add another 10 to it, but of the 50 acres that you have, a significant portion is wetlands. If this comes to pass and you have the 60 acres, of that 60 acres, how much of it is roughly is developable and how much of it needs to be discounted because of the wetlands?
Yes, we had already, we had always looked at this parcel figuring that there was 35 acres before this, 35 acres maximum that were going to be usable.
And is that 35 acres of a contiguous?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, it's hard to tell by this, but you know, basically this over here, this triangle here, it's not usable.
Because of the wet?
Yeah, this is wet and steep, but the remainder of it is good ground. And we were really amazed that Ty and Vaughn do the borings that even up on this side, this is Ledgewood. So we just said, "Well, we're obviously going to have Ledgewood there." Not so. They would go down maybe five feet, get something, move it over, go down 20 feet. But the buildings that are going to be there are, they're just going to be a service building for their business, you know, just a modern building, you know, single, you know, high garage doors, probably no basement. So that really isn't going to, wouldn't impact it greatly anyway, but actually, we just, we were pleasantly surprised at the results and that's good. That's all that worked.
If this doesn't pass, then what? Will you still go ahead with the development of your existing 50 acres?
Well, if it doesn't...
If it doesn't pass, then what?
Yeah, I mean, let's put it this way. 10 years ago, when I walked it with Mass Development, where I said, "I mean, it's not the ideal development, but it's all we have. It'll still produce a good 10, maybe even 12 building lots, depending upon the size of the parcel." You know, figuring these types of businesses are going to need probably 10 acres, you're there and everything. So it'll still be worth doing, but because it's kind of marginal coming out of the gate, you know, this would not, this would not help us at all. And there's no use for that piece of land. It's all landlocked. And actually, you know, we've been, one of the problems that the town has is water. And that's going to be a problem for us across the street with our development on the state school site, is how much water, potable water, the town's going to be able to report. And we've been looking in the back of this parcel, as a matter of fact, as a possible well site. But this would also, this would help that along as well.
The back of the 10-acre piece that we're talking about being added to B2?
Right, I mean, you have to go through this to get the other 40 acres of the town.
So you're thinking about the 40 acres as a source of water?
Possibly. It's been talked about. I don't think it's gone any further than that at this point. I think they're looking for something to explore. So this would, this would actually end up being an access road to that if all works out as planned.
And then you had thrown out examples of landscaper, trucker logging. You're visualizing this as being contractor yard type of applications?
Pretty much, yeah.
But there's no guarantee that it would be contractor yard application?
Well, let's see, we've got five people lined up ready to go with us.
All contractor yard?
Well, that type of thing, the landscaper, loggers, you know, whatever, and construction.
So you're envisioning it as a place where they would be storing their, or having their offices and storing, but not manufacturing on site?
Right, right.
And would that be mandated or, I mean, what's to say someone isn't going to want to?
B2 is B2.
Right.
Once somebody owns five acres of B2, it's theirs.
Well, unless you have, like across the street at Carriage Grove, there's a, you know, a whole list of things that are, we'll just say frowned upon, you know, trying to keep it so that you don't have a neighbor next to you with junk cars and stuff like that. I mean, there will probably be some kind of limitations, but not many, not many.
Do you have any idea if this zoning is not done versus it being done? Do you have any idea of what the traffic in and out of Turkey Hill Road, how that would be affected?
Haven't given any thought right now. I've been trying to see what we could come up with as far as traffic. I mean, the types of businesses going in there are only going to have like two or three employees, you know, and, you know, two or three trucks. As far as the people that have contacted me with interest of being located there, that's the type of thing.
How many lots would be, more lots would be available with this zone change? Because that would be a factor, would you?
Well, 10 acres at the end there, that would, that would be at least three lots at the end.
Okay, but you'd have, say, eight or nine or something anyway, even without this?
Possibly, yeah. It would, we do have some slope constraints over on this side, so it would be, yeah, boy, it would be tough without it.
But I think your question is a better question. The incremental effect as a result of approving this or not approving this?
Right.
It's an incremental change. That would be the better question.
Well, like I said, the pros, Mass Development, you know, had walked this years ago and, you know, had deemed, without knowing this was a possibility, the additional 10 acres, basically it was kind of like, "Well, sell it to somebody who can do it." Well, the trouble is with the zoning bylaws, the way they are, a 600-foot cul-de-sac would give us nothing. We might as well just hang it up. I mean, the only way we can really do this is to map out a road, bring it before the select board, have them approve it, then we could sell the development if we sell the shoes. But a development could not go anywhere, it couldn't go halfway in the way it is now
I understand.
And without having a waiver of the distance of the road. This is all for the town. We're not in it, we don't make a dollar.
Understand that completely.
So we're just trying to, we're trying to keep jobs and businesses in the town that we have. And there's ones just over the line in Granby that are interested in coming as well. These are jobs, these are your son, you know, that's all we've been mandated to do at the EDIC and this is part of it.
I'm not trying to give you...
Oh, I know.
Just trying to make sure that I understand and that I be the devil's advocate and I ask the questions that I think the citizens would want to know.
Sure, absolutely.
Especially given that there is a subdivision right there and it probably is going to raise alarm bells if projects that aren't allowed at Carriage Grove are okay over here, we might have some...
But they are only, as you put it, not allowed because of the way that Mass Development has set it up on the east side of Carriage Drive was to have, it's basically their boilerplate of restrictions. We don't, you know, we don't want this here, we don't want that here, that type of thing. It's not a, it's not per se nasty, dirty business or something like that. They're not going to be making a huge amount of noise. And actually, the way things have mapped out, we're probably going to go with the road hugging the closest to Ledgewood and having all the, except for one, all of the...
So, relative to this, your road is going to be hugging this?
Right, right. It, well, it'll start in here and it will probably have one here, but most of them, it's mostly going to hug this side and have the buildings on this side, which will be furthest away from any houses. In these lots, the houses are all of here. So, you know, the further you go in, the further it's away from any other residential.
I wonder if it would help the public if you explained that to them?
The public?
And you have some public on the remote world.
Right, okay. Yes. You guys look over there?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so this is on Route 21 here and... And the way that this is mapping out, it looks as though we may have one small one here, but most of the road is probably going to go in on this way and the buildings will be on this side of the road, not near the backyard of these up here.
And what is this earmarked for?
Well, hopefully...
A road in there too?
Well, what's going to happen if we can, if we can get this zone changed and this zone changed now, then we can basically come into the center of this and put the, you know, we'll have to put a cul-de-sac obviously. So put a cul-de-sac there and then we'll be able to put a couple here, like that. But the closest house, well, there's a building there.
That's mine.
That's yours?
Yeah.
All right, well, congratulations.
Yeah.
Anyway, so I mean, it's quite a way this way, especially because this is all over here, so we can't, I mean, this is all too steep here, can't build on any of that. That's why we're hugging, we're probably hugging that, the shallower part of the incline here and the buildings will be on this side, not on here.
Okay, so this is slope, so red is deeper.
Yes. Yeah, this is, this is steep, this is steep. So wherever it's steep, obviously, we're not going to put the road in and not a building either. So it's probably going to come right along here and put a few back in here, which is going to be, while we'll be closer to high school, it'll be... Well, yes, yes, it's very steep along here and this is all wet, yeah, we can't use any of this.
Now, you might want to also...
There's no, not the meeting access, no, it's all going to be down here?
Correct. Yeah, this is well, compared to the rest of the 50 acres, the parallel, probably at office, whatever, something like that. Well, this is also a feeling.
I'm not representing the town, I'm not representing the family, but I'll wait for the board to go.
Yes, I think, I think probably we should...
The people up there on the...
Cycle through all of our board members asking questions first.
I got a comment that, you know, people on the screen would like to see too. So find a camera.
Oh, yes.
I think there's one up there.
If you could show them your map.
You can see yourself in the picture in the upper left, so... There you go.
Yes.
From over the other way. There you go. Whoop, you had it.
Perfect. All right. All right, this one.
How about I hold it?
Okay, this is Route 21 here. Okay. This is Route 21 here. We don't have a lot of frontage. So the road will come in here and will probably have one small business here, but for the most part, the road will be nearest of the development over here and the buildings will be on the other side of the road, back closer to this. This is the adventure that goes down the stream. So this, the road will come in approximately in like this. And this parcel here is the parcel that we're here to talk about. This is the 10-acre parcel that's part of the town's land, surrounding here. So what we would like to do, we would like to be able to find, obviously, this is very difficult with the terrain here. So if we were to get this from the town and change the zoning to accommodate, then the road would come in and we'll have a cul-de-sac back in this area. So that's why changing the zoning of this could be very helpful. Without it, it would make the results of endeavor marginal. This would make it a doable project. And this is all for the benefit of the town, to benefit such of the smaller businesses that we can accommodate on Carriage Grove. And we have four or five of them that have been patiently waiting so that they could move their business here. Both of them are in town already, but are looking elsewhere because we got no other business though. Right?
Okay, so we could just pop back to the board room and ask their questions and then we'll open it up to the public.
I have no questions now.
At this point, I have no questions, thank you.
I think I've asked mine.
I heard that you have had a grant, design of the road?
Correct.
Is that already underway?
Yes, we have a, oh, no, it's not, the state. Yeah, so we have Ty and Vaughn. They did all the research on here, see what we had to work with, and now they are plotting out a possible roadway and blocking with the town, water and sewer, the issue here.
Caller two, would you mute yourself, please? So, is Ty and Vaughn working on the presumption that they will have this 10 acres?
At this point, yes, yep.
There's not a projection that you might then come back for the other 40 acres?
Oh, no, no. This is, this is the only thing that we're looking for to make this a viable entity.
I guess if nobody else up here has any further questions at the moment, we will open it up to the public. You should address your questions to us and we'll... Are there people on the remote who would like to speak as well? You could unmute yourself if that's the case. Well, let's, let's deal with the folks right in front of us then. You could identify yourself.
Might be easier.
I'm Diane Moss, I live at 170 Springfield Road and I'd like to make a personal question here. I had a few, I guess, comments, you know, regarding this or comments, questions, I'll address to the board, but I appreciate you being here and certainly support the work of the EDIC over the years to bring this into the community. A question that I would have, now I having a better understanding of the plans for potential cul-de-sac, is if that is, if the goal is eventually to make, we also accept it in the town road. And I'm asking this, all the questions I have or comments are really in light of other additional opportunities for proposed developments to come before boards to have another chance at being looked at. So one was whether or not that potentially becomes a town road as opposed to sort of private, private growth, I think, on the first, one question. I'm not sure the board could speak to this. I think the EDIC, and you are, you have to a certain extent about specific uses intended for that and particularly whether the hope was for business uses versus industrial uses in our zoning classifications, because just being the limits of the 10 to the opposite of business and industrial, you know, based on our legal zoning. And I was also curious just about, I understand the parcel in front is E2. E2 gives more latitude to certain uses, B1 restricts it a little bit more, requires more, you know, special comments, special review. And curious if B1 had been considered at all or if that was felt to be just, you know, too restrictive, too much of a barrier to development happening on the parcel. I would assume, and I'm just, this is a moral statement, that obviously, given the amount that was there, the rougher that runs, you know, almost adjacent to their part, through part of the parcel, almost adjacent to the parcel, you know, obviously be anything that would trick anything else. Protection after law is coming for that protection as well, opportunity to provide appropriate protection. So just to recap, town road access, specific uses, business versus industrial, and B1 versus E2.
Thank you. Well, I think between our EDIC room and Doug, we can probably get those questions answered, although I might just follow up on your part one, meaning that there might be competitors for the use of these particular acres if it were a town road or...
No, just curious if that was sort of the plan or if it could actually become another town road into that parcel, which, you know, would very have advantages in many ways, then would also, you know, potentially be, I guess, another opportunity. I'm not sure of this, but maybe another opportunity for review of that road layout.
Yeah, I believe that's the intent, that the select board would lay it out and then it would become a town road once it's finished. So otherwise, it'd have to go through the subdivision process, which would be, you know, tons of expense that EDIC doesn't have. So their plan was for the select board to lay it out and have it become a town road, just like the two streets, Carriage Drive especially, go... Carriage Drive especially going through, oh, State School campus.
And how about the B2, B1 distinction?
Well, B2 is considered because it would be contiguous with what's already B2. And it might not pass the attorney general's muster if it just stuck a random isolated
Spot.
B1 zone in there.
I hadn't really, hadn't really thought that, of that possibility. I think because of the site limitations, I don't think, I don't think we accommodate anything like that. You know, like I said, the, the flocks might not be that big, you know, maybe five acres, but I, you know, and, and I would imagine they would, anything that you might be referring to as far as industrial wire, yeah.
Yeah, you know, like contractor, contractor yard are industrial.
Okay.
Which is the, the brain of that top line, you know, top line.
Yeah. Right, uh, you know, it's a hardly possible. It's somebody, you know, that was in, you know, excavation, stuff like that. Obviously, they're gonna, you know, if you want to place the, put their machinery in a building to pull in and work on it. But the, they're not gonna be doing their work there. It's mainly just the home base, but they would have to get in their garden.
I'd just like to comment on that. Andrea McDonald, I'm in a butter, I don't know if you can catch me over. Several years ago, we tried for our business there and had its own B2. And there was a lot of feedback as to being B2 and the fact that B2, you can put anything there as industrial, as she was saying. Once it's zone B2, you have no recourse as to what goes in there. So the issue becomes, once it's changed to that, you can't go back. And that's where my concern comes in. They would not let us put an auto repair business there as a B2. And as a gutter now, you're putting that whole parcel as a B2 saying, well, it's going to be limited businesses that aren't going to be an industrial type of business. How are we guaranteed that? And?
Well, the parcel that EDIC owns at this point is zone B2. This is the piece adjacent to it on the other side that we're trying to join into.
Right.
I think as far as your situation.
And that's what I'm saying is, am I going to be able to make my B2? I mean, is, am I going to get the same last back I got 20 years ago? Because I have now a B2, because before I was told I'm a spot. I'm, I'm considered a spot zone.
Yeah, it'd be much more appropriate now.
Right.
When, when was the, when was the zoning made B2?
Uh, your parcel?
Well, we come over.
Back in the early 90s.
Okay, was that?
I went to 1995, out here, we tried to wait.
Yeah.
You're right on to 2021.
I'm a large water on Turkmyl. I'm great. I'm the big corner piece of 31.
That's the one that juts in here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That you're talking about.
Oh, oh, right. Yeah, you pointed it out. Sure. Well, like I, like I pointed out, I mean, the whole thing with zoning is.
And I already got the facility on there. And I even came to the board, I mean, not the board, I'm sorry. I came to EDIC and tried to buy that parcel to put our shop there and I was told that we couldn't do it. And they kept not returning my calls and not returning my calls. Neither here nor there, not a point for tonight's meeting. But now we're talking about changing this to B2. And I'm wondering how that affects my property. Am I gonna be in, like you said, probably a good position to put B2 now? Because it is B2 all, all around my whole back lot.
Okay.
So, but as she was saying is, was my point, as the industrial part, we were told no because of the general description of our business. But you're saying, oh, well, they're not going to do that here. But once it's B2, there's no recourse once it's there.
Could I, could I jump in just real quick? The EDIC property, the 50 acres currently is B2.
Right, it got changed, which I didn't realize.
There is a schedule of use and that controls what's on B2, not what they promise or anything else. There is a schedule of use that says, here's what's allowed and what's not allowed on B2. And, and whoever owns that property has those, the, the right for those schedule of uses.
Right.
What we're talking about here is a, a, an additional 10 acres in the very back.
In the back.
Unrelated to, it's, it's not directly abutting your property.
Right, but they needed to go, but he said the road was gonna go right past mine.
Correct, but whether or not we, whether or not the town changes the zoning on this 10 acres in the back, it doesn't change anything with the 50 acres that they currently have.
I understand.
And it's currently B2. Going back to your question of your property and could it then become B2? We're not in any position to make any promises. I want to be clear on that.
I understand that.
Okay.
Yeah, I get that.
I, I just want to make sure that we put that on the record.
Whatever. I guess my question is, is it a possibility because I abut it, it is no longer a spot zone?
Yeah, it wouldn't be a spot zone in that case.
Thank you.
We could, I mean, if, if we're going right by your, the former your property with the road.
Thank you very much.
Every lower driveway.
But again, that, that would have to go before town meeting and the, and, okay. I just want to make sure we're clear here. No promises.
No, I'm good with that. Move everything here instead of moving it back here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and essentially, that's what EDIC is trying to encourage.
Right.
With, with this change and the development of this property into a more small business friendly
Right.
Type of opportunities. That's what they're trying to accomplish.
Right. And we were told because there's wetlands over there that a road couldn't be put that far back. But we didn't do the research, obviously, that you've gotten into with surveying.
Yeah, Ty and Von, they're very thorough.
Yeah.
That's it. So we know exactly.
Yeah, exactly.
These are the contractors' yards. That's on the list of industrial uses?
Yeah.
So right now, that's a special permit. And our, we don't allow structures to be built in a contractor's yard.
Well, you could have, you know, your, your shop.
Right.
Yeah, you're not manufacturing.
Manufacturing, you know, not be on the property. Yeah, it'd be, I just asked that question earlier tonight, and in B2, it would be the CBA that would make, would grant that special.
But they could build things inside a, what I'm thinking of is, I mean, one of the people that I talked with for the last couple of years are the boxers and their shed works business. They, they're one of the people that want to move here from Palmer. And, you know, so they make sheds, something like that. So that's all done inside with, you know, air guns and everything. So I'm, I'm not sure that you had said something about not building stuff out of the yard.
Right, okay.
So I'm not familiar with that, that part of it.
In the, in the case of a contractor's yard, which is what, you know, was first, the first thing on the list of what might be in this place, would not be a building of things. It would be the place where you kept your equipment to go in.
That's typically what a contractor's yard.
Typically, yeah.
But.
I'm just saying, in this particular instance, B2, the shedworks, you know, they make their sheds there and shackle up. But it's all done inside the building.
Right. So in that case, there would be, would be proposing building.
Anything would at least go through site plan approval anyway and, or a special permit on top of that. Uh, there are a couple of comments. One of the people up there can't use her mic for some reason. No. Uh, well, she asked, does this proposal affect the Ledgewood neighborhood? Does, does this proposal affect the Ledgewood neighborhood?
I don't see it affecting it at all. I mean, these people here probably are the closest ones to being affected by it. And I think that's quite a distance away from it. And because of the terrain, it, it keeps, the whole Ledgewood is up a whole lot higher than, than the roadway. And the way we're gonna design it is to have everything closer to the, the high school, if you will, on the down end side.
But you've had, got the roads skirting that, the edge where there are lots.
If we get the road kind of going from point to point, then, you know, we put everything towards the, the stream, if you will.
But that would, the road would be?
Right. Yeah.
Well, traffic might be a concern for the people who are closer to the road.
Right.
They're closer to your road.
Correct. Correct. You know, and like I said, we, we haven't gotten to the point of doing a traffic study or anything like that. I, I mean, the, the types of, this isn't, there isn't going to be anybody sitting, you know, in here. People are not going to be coming and going and everything. They have their shop there. They go there at seven in the morning, get the trucks to do the thing back at night. You know, I, I just don't, I don't see it. I don't see it being any kind of a traffic issue. I know when it gets down the road, then we're gonna have to figure that out, like, what exactly that's going to, how much impact that's gonna have. The types of businesses, because there's no retail, just, I don't see that the traffic is going to be much of an issue, but.
Well, loggers and truckers might concern people with.
Right, well, you know, they, they have to go somewhere. You know, we're trying to find a place so that they, you know, at this point, you know, they're.
And the only access, I'm sorry, the only access is gonna be from 202 or is it on 21?
The only access is on 21.
Where on 21 is it?
Right after Anytime Fitness.
Is it?
Right, yeah.
Okay, I see, oh, I see where you're going. Yeah, right.
All right, more, more questions. Where will the road be? So you might need to explain that a little more closely. How does it relate to Ledgewood and how far back would it be?
Well, like I said, we don't have an awful lot of frontage there. I forget how much it is, maybe 250 feet. And on the, let's see, where's north, south, east? On the east side of that is where the culvert is and the stream. So then I have to stay away from that to begin with. Whether we can even put anything in that initial corner there. Let's see, this in here, whether there could be anything there, I don't know. It's maybe one, but I don't think that even that's gonna fly because it does go quite a deep tree there.
Yeah, correct.
And it is preliminary at this point. We, you know, Ty and Von, you know, gave us a couple of proposals and, you know, we can do this or we can do that. And we decided, said, well, let's put the road closest to Ledgewood so the buildings and the, you know, traffic and the noise and everything are further away from your house.
Correct. Maybe take this map up to the, show the people up there.
Oh, you don't.
Where the road would be.
So the access onto 21 would be roughly across from where Contractor Supply is?
Correct.
Thank you.
There is a side exit.
Yeah. Thank you.
I think there is.
No, I don't think so. Because you'd be driving through the wetlands.
So, are you talking about the red dotted lines?
Since the wetlands are on this side, this is our front of the chair. Uh, the road comes out, they'd be coming in approximately here.
That's.
And would hug where this point comes in. Would come along here and the businesses would be on this side. This is very steep. This is very steep. So I'm not sure how many lots we're gonna be able to get out of it. Uh, it depends on what people are thinking of ours or its acreage. But at this point, it's early on. And the reason why we're here is because this piece that belongs to the town currently, we are looking to absorb into our plan here to make it, we'll have a cul-de-sac back here. And where there aren't any houses at all. And hopefully, we can get eight to 10 good sized lots in there to be able to keep these small businesses in town.
So you mean eight to 10 total, eight to 10 total or eight to 10 in that 10 acre chunk?
Total. Well, not that.
Just saying.
See, without it, you know, without it, we might end up with just like seven. You know, the cost of building a road and everything is not worth it. You know, we're, we're treading that fine line. That's why mass development just kind of went, you know, in line with that. But we got nothing else to offer for the town or a place to put businesses like this. And they're not, they're not noisy. But whatever, I mean, and like, you know, would people want to come in and buy a lot? Yeah, I suppose. I don't know. As far as telling people they can't come in because their business is too noisy or too this, too that. I mean, we, we've had motor broths come in, you know. They want to put a motor broth there and say, boy, they'd really love that, you know. It's like, no, no, keep going. So we're just trying to accommodate mainly the businesses that we already have that have no home because we got so little commercial properties for them to locate their business. That's what we're trying to do.
Do we have any more questions from the people who are listening remotely? That's it?
Yeah, she's just trying to, okay, the people there, they want to know, other, something other than here. Don't say here. Explain, I guess, on the map, where's Route 21, where's Anytime Fitness? So where the, where, where the road would go in specifically? It'll be on the south side of Anytime Fitness, where the, where the logging path has gone in.
It actually will probably be further, further on 21 because of proximity of the stream.
Yeah, well, you go ahead and explain it.
Okay, so they just, they just want another view of where the road's going?
Yeah, give them, tell them the. Yeah, give them a, tell them the specific geography.
Okay. The road will come in, this is the frontage, this is Tractor Supply over here. This is our, the frontage that we have on Route 21. And I, at this point, it's very early, but what we've gotten from Ty and Bond is the most likely scenario is the road will come in approximately up here. And we pretty much, we pretty much cut from point to point. And then what we want to do is absorb this 10 acres to make this a more usable area with, you know, the culvert sack would have to obviously be here for the C-10. So we would have, with the road being on this side, we'd have the businesses on that side, which would be furthest away from the nearest residential, would be closer to the high school, but this is all wetlands and wooded through here. So be good luck up there as well. In practice.
So I see the concern is that where it was logged is below, is below Forest Road and the whole Ledgewood neighborhood. They hear the log. So, anyway, most of that, yeah. I mean, I suppose in any construction, we're getting...
Right. But again, logging is about the loudest decibel level we're going to have. And that's not, that's already happened.
Yeah.
So the, I mean, presumably, there may be a business, a guy who is a logger, will just be coming in and out with his trucking, or, but he's going down in front of your yard anyway on 21. So, you know, there's just so much you can do. We'll do what we can to make it, to accommodate the residences, residences nearby.
Well, as much detail, and it is perhaps some visuals for town meeting, would probably serve you well.
Okay.
Because if people are anxious.
We're sending this to the select board.
No, town meeting.
Well, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah. The process is that once this public hearing is closed, the planning board will deliberate on whether or not to recommend that town meetings approve this motion or not. And then it still goes to town meeting, even if they say, no, we hate this. It'll still go to town meeting, so...
There's just one step.
And the more answers you can have for people who are anxious, the better.
Yeah, that'd be a good chance if you're doing this in town meeting.
Have you folks asked, asked all your questions?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, basically, boy, you know, if you're looking to have access, I'm sure we're going to accommodate it. I mean, you're right there.
It's probably down the road, so to speak.
Yeah, yeah. But yeah, definitely, that would kind of make sense.
Yeah.
Maybe you want to buy a decent parcel there.
We've been trying.
Well...
I think we'll continue on with our work here, which is...
We'll let you go.
Do, get back to board members to see if any of this has raised some questions.
Is everyone done with the public? Was there any more public comment now?
Right.
Can I make a comment to the public? And that is if they go on belcher town.org, go at the Belcher Town website, and they go to the bylaws, and under 145 bylaws, there is the schedule of uses. If they look under the schedule of uses for what's allowed in B2, or more importantly, what's not allowed in B2, and I'm looking at lumber milling and fuel storage and fabricate, industrial fabrication, that'll give them an idea of what B2 allows and what it doesn't allow. So, you know, we're not allowing general manufacturing, industrial uses, not commonly considered hazardous, no hazardous waste, no medical marijuana treatment facility. I mean, there's a whole list of what we allow and what we don't allow. And that's what's important to understand for B2 in general. This land abuts, the 21 is already B2. What you're asking to do is just expand that footprint a little bit.
In the back.
In the back, from 50 acres to 60 acres. So you're looking for a 10-acre in the back to expand the footprint of the existing B2. And I want to leave it at that. Leave it at that.
Yes. All set? Okay, then I think what I should do now is move to close the public portion of the hearing on this amendment. And that means we will not be taking any more comments. So, last call. All right, then. I will then move that we close the public portion of the hearing on this amendment.
I'll second the motion.
Any further questions?
Nope.
Okay, understanding that no more comments will be considered, hearing none, I bring Excuse us, can we, want to be able, I want everybody to be able to hear. Hearing none, I bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let the record show that 300 vote to close the public hearing. Okay, so now we, we discuss amongst ourselves.
Yep.
Some of those further discussion that happened.
And for clarity, we are making a recommendation only to the citizens for their vote at the annual town meeting, but they make the final decision. So we're making the recommendation either for or against expanding this footprint from, for the EDIC development. From my perspective, I've had people come to me, small contractors, say, Belcher Town does not have an easy way for small businesses to stay here. And we've made some move with expanding the contractor yard, with expanding its definition, creating it as in the schedule of use, et cetera. To me, this is one more step in our trying to support small businesses and keep employment here rather than just relying on residential taxpayers to cover everything. So I see this as a positive thing in terms of getting the EDIC to put this property onto the taxpaying rolls, and at the same time, put it on the taxpaying rolls in the non-residential aspect and the business aspect, and get business taxes coming in. So I think it's a good
In principle, I agree with that. I'm a little concerned about some of the vagueness about the size. Like, oh, if somebody wanted to buy five acres, maybe they could do something bigger. And I'm wondering at what point parameters that will make it true to these small businesses will be set up. And I mean, that might not be anything that's...
I think, yeah, I think that's something that you'd have to take up with the EDIC and how they want to develop.
Anything that's, anything that's on that B2 list, no.
And that's the thing to keep in mind. This is a landowner who has property that will be B2. And so long as they abide by our bylaws and schedule of uses and everything, we can't mandate limitations. So if they're abiding by our bylaws and they are a property owner owning property in Zone B2, they have rights. And that's what Zone is all about, you know?
I totally understand that.
We can't tell them.
We can't. But what they're, what we're hearing is that it's not economically feasible without our 10 acres added to the piece, just to play devil's advocate here.
What's not...
What we were hearing from the EDIC person was that without the extra 10 acres...
Building the road, he's still saying building a road might not be feasible, but I think that's, I think he was seeing speculative.
The other aspect is if you don't, then somebody can come in and say, well, I'll buy 50 acres of B2, and I'll put one, one massive something there.
End up with a junkyard old Navy there.
You know? So...
I'm just, I'm just, since a lot of this is new, I'm kind of processing it.
No, that's fine. It's a lot of acreage. I think 50 acres, I think he's going to end up with, now I'm being speculative, but I think he's going to end up with more than seven lots.
We, but you said that we had to carve off 15 of them because they were unusable.
Well, the wetlands here in the back, certainly.
Okay. Mark?
I'm fine. I have no additional questions at this point. Been a good discussion, I think.
Okay. Well, should I...
What are your comments?
Well, I think I've made them. I, I was concerned about the vagueness. I mean, I haven't thought about that yet. And I, you know, I'm not used to hearing that from the developer when it comes to, well, I don't really know what the traffic would be. I mean, those are things that, as you say, we would be doing site approval on, these things. So we'll have, it's not just kicking the can down the road.
My take on it is that it's, the rest of it, it's budding, everything else is already B2.
Right.
So for me, it's, we can make more money off this 10 acres with business taxes, other than it'll just sit there. It'll do nothing, right? So for me, it's a no-brainer. You know, if it was more than 10 acres, if it was another 50 acres or another 60 acres that they were looking to take out of AgA, enough then I might have some conservation commission type questions, right? But I mean, this isn't, it's not a large enough parcel to me. I don't think so to make that much of a difference. I'm ready to roll.
Okay. Well, let's see if I get the language right here. If everyone's all set, I move that we recommend to town meeting that we amend Chapter 145, Article 2, Section 145-5 zoning map to change the zoning of a portion of the parcel identified as Map 255, Lot 21, on the town's, I'm sorry, that's 121, isn't it? Lot 121. Yes, 121.
121, yeah.
On the town's census maps from AgA, primary agriculture, to B2, general business. That's posted on the town's website and on file with the town clerk and planning department. Second?
I'll second.
Len's...
No, Len.
Len has seconded it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye, too. All right, let the record show 300. And I think we're done with that. Excuse me.
Come to town meeting.
Yes.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you guys for coming.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Okay, so we've taken care of minutes. Doug, it's on you, right, for member's report? I mean, for minor's report?
I can do that. Subdivision regulations, I've gone through all the text, made the necessary edits, and checked the numbering of things, and I'm going to do it at least once or twice more to make sure. But I think it's time we schedule a public hearing for this. And, you know, we still have to work on updating the forms and everything. But we can certainly accept the regulation without that piece in place yet.
So what by soon, you mean like before?
Like...
Elections and town meetings.
Kind of the end of May or early June.
Okay, so we can get through.
Good, good.
This doesn't need to go before ATM for a formal vote.
No, it is a regulation, so it is...
So I would suggest that we wait until after the dust settles, which is, I think, what you're saying, is after ATM's done and the election's done and the dust settles, that's when we have the public hearing.
In June.
Our first meeting in June, maybe?
Back to work.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Pepper Ridge, Liz, and DPW, and who else was there? I. Met with the developer, his engineering team, and his lawyer, and went over what needs to be done and when they're going to do it. And so they sent us the summary of that, which I essentially agree with. And we discussed the one thing we need to be more clear about is the basin fences. And I remember when they were in a year or two ago, and the discussion was, well, do we really need to put up fences around the basins? They don't hold water. And I think the sentiment then was to waive it.
The sentiment was. Are you talking about what I flagged?
Yeah. I am, but I think we need to verify because we weren't absolutely sure during that meeting.
I think it was just, what I was complaining about was the fact that the way they constructed the sentence made it sound as though we left it dangling. And I felt that everyone in the room had agreed that the fences were not necessary.
Yeah, okay. I'll make sure they understand that. So let's get that in a minute this time. So I looked in a minute and I found it. And other than that, I think the rest of this looks good. DPW, when they are doing their repaving this year, they'll just include this to send the milling machine over and grind up the existing asphalt and then, and have it repaved with the developer paying for it. And so that'll save everybody some money. And that way, DPW will know that it gets done to their standards. So I think this could actually happen. Of course, we talked about it a couple years ago. Solar project, Agilitas over here has begun. They have all the permits. They've probably driven by and seen the opening. So it's been encouraging to get the cutting done before all the birds came back to nest. But maybe, at this point, I'm hoping the noise will keep any potential nestlings out of there. What's that noise? Oh, and here was a discussion that was thrust upon me in a meeting last week, about one-stop brands and business development and stuff, that, something new, we haven't encountered before, but apparently there's substantial interest in the select board and town manager for a comprehensive review and revision of our zoning, which hasn't been done in about 30 years, probably.
Yes. Can you tell what the motivation is?
I think they find a lot of things obsolete. And, you know, because we have kind of cobbled things together over the years. And so they want to, they want to do this, so I'm going to apply for a one-stop grant. A project like that takes a hundred thousand, something like that, maybe more. You've got to hire a bunch of lawyers and zoning experts. You can spend a lot of time picking money, I mean, reviewing everything and providing analysis. So, yeah, so we'll be looking into that. And town meeting was shifted to May 31st, Saturday morning, bright and early. We hope they'll be serving pancakes, because I'm going to still be... We hope they'll be serving pancakes because I'm going to still be in my jammies. And I think that's about it. Town election is still at the same date, which is, what, 3rd Monday?
19.
19. And we have only one candidate from planning board, if you can believe that. I think, and all my time here has been maybe twice we've had more than one candidate.
Have we ever had an opposition?
That's what I mean. Yeah. Yeah. Like the first time Jim Nadel ran, he got beaten by Jim Nadel. But he joined us the next year. And, so anyway, that's all I have for now, I think. There's lots of other stuff going on. Don't have it on the top of my head. But, yeah, and, you know, there's all this budget talk in town meeting. We have no idea where that's going.
Signs are starting to go up all over.
Signs are sprouting. Indeed, they are, faster than death adults, so. Just get out and vote. So yeah.
So now I have to go through everybody. Len?
I have nothing further.
Nothing further. Mike?
I'm fine.
Mark?
I'm all set, thanks.
I, I only want to just add to what Doug said about the meeting around Pepper Ridge, which is how impressed I was with our DPW.
Yeah.
That the developers were very amiable, but they definitely were hoping that the town would pay, that the town would let them pass on getting rid of all the invasives that are, the invasives that still remain in the detention ponds. And also, they were, they didn't actually come right out and say, we'd like you to share the cost of repaving. But that's, I finally said.
They wanted to avoid it completely.
Yeah. And, you know, first of all, Linda said, you know, typically we accept a road after three years, often when it's one year old, and this is, what, 18, 20 years old and it never had its top.
Oh, it does have the top coat, but it's all, they've been gone out and cracked sealed and.
When they turn it over to the town, it needs to be in good condition.
She said, I cannot, I cannot do this to the town.
Correct.
I was, and the same thing with the invasive. She said, he was talking about how difficult it was to reach them because of the rip rap, et cetera. And she said, you've been doing it every year as you're supposed to and we would do for our roads that we've accepted. This wouldn't have been the case and I'm not willing to have the town take that on. Anyway, it was, it was incredibly polite and then calm. And, and then they worked out an arrangement where if they can get their ducks in a row and be ready to pave when the town is already doing their paving, that they can probably get a much better deal on the cost of, of the material by virtue of feedbacking on the best. So that's, Doug said, I mean, what we put in escrow and it might actually happen this summer.
Yeah, they should appreciate because it's pretty generous.
It was very generous and it was, it was very good problem solving too because they could have just said, well, you bought it and you, you let it go and it's on you. So we didn't, we didn't absorb the cost, but we made it, or they made it much more palatable. And also, we needed to do the milling, which, in any way, it was.
We have a good DPW leader.